From Alabama, the South, and really it's where we're seeing very low vaccination rates. Alabama and Mississippi, some parts of Georgia, I know Nevada was having a number of cases in the last couple of weeks. So you'll want to, just be aware, and we've said that all along, just be aware of your surroundings and make a choice that's safe for you and for your family. We're not saying not to travel anywhere. Certainly, there's a lot of things open. Cruise ships are back open. Some places in Europe are back open. Canada isn't open to us yet, but there are places that our residents could go and should feel comfortable going, especially if they're vaccinated. But again, make that, just be aware and make those choices for yourself and be aware of your health coming back. And that's what we've been saying all along when people travel.
Krista, are there still having vaccinations clinics around the county?
We are.
Is it all?
No, the Health Department is still doing them out and around the county. We have a schedule. I didn't look at the schedule for you this week, but we're all over.
Somebody, if they're interested in seeing what the schedule is, how would they access?
Yep. MedinaHealth.org, it's right on our homepage. It's on our calendar on our homepage, or you can go to MedinaHealth.org/vaccine and you can find it there as well.
Yeah, yesterday I just showed a post that showed the various states over the next couple of weeks.
Yep. We have them planned out. We're putting them out a couple of weeks in advance now because we have the vaccine. We know we have a ready supply. We can promote those. So people can plan and pick a date or a location that's convenient for them.
They're much smaller.
Very small. Very small. They're short, small, right? We're trying to go into easy places into the community. I know we've been down to Westfield Center and a lot of the places, especially in the southern tier area of the county because there's not as many other vaccinators down there, pharmacies and things like that. So, yeah.
So in the fall,
Yes.
When the flu shot comes out,
Yes.
Normal flu shot,
Yes.
Where we would anticipate that to be, will it include a component for COVID as a booster, or how?
I've not, we've not heard that yet from the manufacturers. So if that product is available, we would have that product as an option for the public. It just really depends on availability, but certainly we would purchase that and make that available if it's there.
Do you see has determined whether a booster is?
They have not. They have not.
Yeah, they have not officially, but I've seen more and more
Yeah.
About the concept of having.
From the pharmaceutical companies. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why I said if it's available and if it's something that people want, you know, that it may be a flu shot and a first dose of vaccine if somebody's not been previously vaccinated. That's an option. But we don't know that that's going to be a product that's available. So we're still encouraging people to go ahead and get the full series now, moving into the fall. I know people were thinking, oh, always wait till the fall if I'm going to need a booster anyway. But there's nothing, nothing that's been definitively shown that you need a booster. So we're really, we're really encouraging people to be vaccinated now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Krista, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but I'm sure you have other things to do.
I do.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move into our resolutions. And first up, we have Andy Conrad, our County Engineer, and Andy is here in the flesh.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Just for Colleen, that's the only reason why I came. No?
That's all it took.
So I have three resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first, approving a final plant for the trails of Redwood Falls. The second being the approval for the annual assessment on improvements constructed for the Redwood Falls subdivision. And the third being the necessity to close Wandell Road between State Route 301 and Camp Road.
Move to approve three resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweated?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
And your weekly permit list is there.
Thank you, Andy.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Next up, we have Drew Lacy, our Budget Officer. Good morning, Drew.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have eight resolutions for your consideration. The first is the amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is a resolution authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the Medina County Print Shop Revenue Line Item. The third is a resolution authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the Medina County Vehicle Maintenance Revenue Line Item. The fourth is authorizing the Medina County Sheriff's Office to purchase a new 2021 Ford Transit 250 cargo van using donated funds from Westfield Insurance Company. The fifth is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction Grant Agreement for the justice reinvestment and incentive funding for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. The sixth resolution is the adoption of the 2022 tax budget. The seventh resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. This is for the Ohio Judicial Conference Annual Meeting in Columbus, Ohio for Judge Kimbler. Police carbine rifle training for Deputy Salzgiver and DARE Officer Basic Training in Columbus for Deputy McCourt. The eighth and final resolution is the claims for the week for $5,254,658.92, of which $3,786,466.21 is due to the sales tax distribution to the schools.
Move to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweated?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Good job, Drew.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Holly Muir, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have a promotion in sanitary, five rate increases, one in Job and Family Services, three in sanitary, and one at Office for Older Adults, one lateral transfer in sanitary, two return from leaves, one at Job and Family Services, and one in sanitary, and one separation at Transit.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweated?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Next up, we have Scott Miller, our County Administrator. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. I just have one resolution for you today. This resolution is authorizing an agreement with the U.S. Marshal Service. It is to house up to 20 federal detainees at the county jail. The federal marshal service would reimburse the sheriff's office on a per diem basis, as well as reimburse them for any medical and transportation costs. This is only on a as-needed basis, and the sheriff would only house federal prisoners if there was space available. So local detainees would be, take priority over the federal, but this would allow the county to generate some additional monies to help cover the cost of the jail.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? I spoke with Sheriff Rice this morning, and he said that he has talked to all the judges.
Right.
And they are supportive of this, and he will manage it so that we can make sure that we take care of our local needs first. And then if there are extra beds, the federal detainees can be housed.
Right. Yeah, I know we talked to Colleen.
Yeah, it's a good program.
Yeah, we've done this, I mean, years ago when Neil Hassinger and so forth, the jail was first built, had the more regular capacity. And but all the years that it got filled, then obviously we didn't do it. But now I'm glad to know, as people behave in our county and do better, and they don't get in trouble and get in jail, we've got room. So we don't have to build a new jail if everybody behaves. I have to say that.
That would be nice. Okay, roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweated?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Next up, we have Jeremy Cinco, our Sanitary Engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Two resolutions today. The first is amending the sewer use charges for the Sharon Township Area Sewer District. With our switch over with Wadsworth happening early next week, we'll be able to get them back on our, the rates that the rest of the county pays. And the second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to advertise for requests for proposals to replace the existing scales at the Medina County Solid Waste District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I just am very glad to see the Sharon Township.
You and me both.
Yeah, they're first promoting and trying to find a way. And it's just nice to be able to get them in the county system. And the issues with Wadsworth resolved.
Correct.
It was a long road, but we. Also, it's good to see the scales.
Yeah.
Yes.
The solid waste district being upgraded because those have been problematic.
They have been for the last
Several years.
Several years, you're correct.
So, roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweated?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jeremy. We have a, we'll go into our department updates. Stephen Bastine, our Facilities Director.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
How are you this morning?
Good. How are you?
Good. I do have one resolution for you this morning, and that's the authorization of advertising for bids for the sheriff, the jail's entry renovation, doing some modifications to the entry point of the jail.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions?
It's nice that the sheriff obtained the $100,000 from the capital grant funding for the project.
It is. Hopefully, it covers all of the things that they need.
Yes.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweated?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And from a department update, over the last, last time I reported, we've done, for this year, we've done 2,376 work orders as of June 30th. I just pulled the numbers for the first six months of the year. Vehicle maintenance is we've done 271 vehicles come through the shop out there. And then we had started up a cleaning process. I let you guys know that we were starting to do audits on our cleaning process, and we have a program called iAuditor that allows us to do it automated. We just walk in and fill out the questionnaire. And so far, our score is about 91%. So we're favorably on what we're recording now. As we start to get more into it and understand how the grading system will works, we'll kind of change some of that to give us more realistic, you know, if we're really having problems, where are we having problems? And hopefully, we can dial some of that in and truly understand what our cleaning process is and where we can go with it. So.
Stephen, I would tell you that the feedback that I've gotten, particularly from folks in the courthouse, has been extraordinary.
Excellent.
And they are very appreciative of the improved level of service.
I feel like doing it in-house has definitely been a step in the right direction. I know it's been a struggle for our department the last couple of years, just making sure that it's got enough people staffed and things like that. But I definitely appreciate the comments coming back. So.
Yeah, please pass it along to your folks.
I will do. Will do. From a capital improvement standpoint, the human service in our parking lot is paved. The weather is not being kind to our paving crew. So it is going to be striped tomorrow, or parts of it will be striped tomorrow. We still have both entry ways yet to do. So that'll start mid next week. We'll start doing the entry ways. We'll close one of those down and get that taken care of. The jail parking lot has been put on hold until next year, just from a design standpoint and opportunity for people to help us with that. Just everybody's schedule's just got too busy. So we will have that ready for next year springtime. The jail chiller upgrade and the county home HVAC system, excuse me, are both hopefully going to be funded through ARP funding. We are still getting the finalization from Gardner. Hopefully, I'll get some of those numbers back the end of this week. And then we'll have firm numbers and what is available and going to be available for those pieces. And then the jail lobby is out. We also are looking at a camera system for the jail. That too will be happening at some point in time. We are in negotiations with a couple of different companies on what will be, or what can be installed there. So we'll get finalized numbers on those as well.
Is this a replacement for the current?
It is. They do have a failure. Yeah, they've had, they've had a few failures, and we don't need one of those to be at a critical time. So the new upgrade will be nice. We did juvenile detention centers this last year, so it's just, they're both in line with it. So hopefully, we'll get on the same system, and that whole system will be the same system.
Yeah, something that's compatible.
It is. Yeah. Hopefully, in the overall scheme, we've been talking about going to an enterprise level, and that will allow us to actually give view to any one person or any group of people, any location. So any of the buildings that we have with this style camera system will be able to be viewed from anywhere, as long as you have permissions to do so. So, you know, if you, we give the sheriffs the ability to look at any of our buildings that have these camera systems, they'll be able to do it from whatever location that they're sitting at. So just going up to a due level of security.
Who, I basically determine the access of those cameras. Will it be the sheriff? Will it be maintenance?
I think it'll be a mixture of everybody involved. I think it'll be from elected officials to department heads, whoever needs it. And again, those levels of security could go all the way down. So if a department wanted to see their department's cameras, we could literally give those people permissions just to those things and not give them anything above that level. So we do have that ability in it. So it, we're moving to the future.
Good.
So from a project standpoint, obviously, the law library was completed, the courthouse entry was moved, you know, the ramp's been installed, all of that. The recorders office here has been completed, the tax map office has been completed, economic development has been completed this last couple of weeks. Our admin shop has moved from here. We're just storing desks in our old area now. We are working on the HR office now, as you guys were well aware, as it's sitting across from you. I'm sure the noise has been great. The smells have been great, I'm sure. And then the, we did a couple of things out at the jail for their new watch guard system. So the cat cables have all been ran, things like that. Right now, we are helping cable 8730, that location for Jeremy Cinco, the new solid waste. So all of that's getting the internets cabling we're doing for them. So from a staffing standpoint, we have hired a new person in the maintenance department. He's a younger kid. Looks like he's got a great head on his shoulders. We'll see how well he, you know, eager to learn. So we'll get there. We still have one open position. We're still looking for somebody there. We are interviewing this week for that. Cleaning Department still needs another person, but I think I could tell you that every single day of every single month of the year. So, and then vehicle maintenance is still being the same. It's still just the same two people doing a great job. No complaints from that area at all. Our four-post lift that was donated, that's costing us a fortune, is being installed this week. So we finally, the parts finally came in for it. So again, steel delays have been across the board. Our parts for that just came in, and we're still missing the jacks that are going to be going on that. They still have not arrived. So they're going to install it so we can actually use the lift for oil changes and things like that, but we cannot lift it off of that. So.
Are the jacks a safety item?
It is.
Should we use it?
Yes. So from an oil change thing, yes, we can use it. The jacks actually lift the tires up off the four-post lift. So the lift, the vehicle drives onto this lift, and then the whole lift lifts the vehicle up. And then there's jack stands inside of that that lift the vehicle off. So you can take, do brake work, any kind of work on that part of the system, but from oil changes and things like that. So basic works, we can use it, and then we'll go from there. They are coming. We just don't know when. And then the last thing, from a utilities standpoint, we have purchased a software program, and we're going to use the same company that we get Asset Essentials from, which is our managing software that'll start managing our utilities. It'll start giving us a play-by-play of our utility usage where we're, they're telling me right now that you will save 3% to 7% off the first year on utilities, just from them monitoring it on a, on a normal basis. They'll, they actually let us know if something's out of whack, or if something's being used that shouldn't be used. So we will start using that, and that'll get integrated into our Asset Essentials as well. And as both of those systems continue to grow, we're hoping that real-time metering will come onboard at some point in time, and we can actually start seeing our usage on a normal basis. I'll be able to give you a better understanding of, hey, if we did this energy project in the future, this is where we should be putting that money, not in, you know, our guesses are great, but you know, it would be much easier if we just come up to you and said, hey, this is where we spend most of our energy. Let's work on getting that project taken care of. So, and that's all I have.
Who exactly do you meter?
They can meter, they meter electric, gas, and water. And we can, water, I'm not so concerned with. We don't have a huge usage of water.
Electric.
However, electric is big and gas is big. Yeah, electric is probably always the largest.
The remodels of the department so far on this building have been extraordinary. They all look very, very nice.
Thank you.
Efficient use of space.
We are trying, right? I think it's been a great use, and I hope Highway's been liking their space. Recorder seems to enjoy their space. Economic Development loves their new space. So we've definitely making some good improvements. So I appreciate, again, that comment.
And I think all the folks have done a great job of accommodating the departments to keep them running during the renovations and.
It's definitely been a struggle, that navigation of getting people where they need to go and still having the systems usable has always been a trouble.
And for people who have never recorded a deed in this building, having the recorders and tax maps be right next to each other, I mean, I, so many times, people are wanting the building looking, and it's much more efficient for the outside user.
Good. Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you, Stephen. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And next, we have Laura Toth from our Office for Older Adults. Good morning, Laura.
Good morning. I have a department update for you. Yesterday marked an essential day in our return to normal activity. We began serving lunches again in Medina and Brunswick. Lunches are served at 11:30 Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday in Medina and in Brunswick the same time on Wednesdays and Fridays. Adults over the age of 60 can sign up for these lunches by contacting the center or just stopping in. And I hope all seniors will come and check it out. It was a really good day and great to see people there, just congregating, having coffee, and getting lunch. It was great. Also, yesterday, we returned to our regular schedule with home-delivered meals. We are again delivering hot lunches four days a week to homebound seniors, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And on Tuesday, it's a frozen meal is delivered for lunch on Wednesday. With this change, our meal, our clients decreased to about 170, which is still way up from the pre-pandemic levels, but certainly less than the 240 or so that we were serving. I have a quick half-year update to begin numbers. As of June 30, we served 30,641 home-delivered meals to 359 clients. And we have provided 2,375 transit trips to 145 clients. Of course, we haven't provided any congregant meals. But as comparison last year in total, so it's a whole year, we served over 67,000 meals to 544 clients and subsidized 5,823 transit trips to 283 clients. I've been working with Shannon and discussing ways that we can utilize more of our transit subsidies, getting the word out to seniors, and transporting them to places where they need to go. They still haven't, that program has not come back since, since the pandemic. So we need to get the word out and let people know that this option is available for all areas of the county. So that's a job for us that we're working on this week. Also, there's not enough going on. Also marks the first week since March of 2020 that I don't have any staff driving meal routes, any office staff. So in the last 16 months, office staff once or twice a week, depending on what your job was, were asked to come and drive a meal route. And with this decline in the delivery, the clients, we're able to go with just our drivers, which is great. They have a little bit of catching up to do in areas such as like assessment updates, but this will easily be accomplished since they're all, they can be dedicated to the task at hand. So I think as much as they like going out and doing meal routes once in a while, to have that as a, you know, weekly task is, was a big ask, but they came through that, and they were very flexible in it. And I thank them. A couple of other things. Seniors, farmers, market vouchers are all dispersed. We gave out 206 voucher packets. So everybody who received one got $50 worth of vouchers, and those were distributed via the U.S. Mail. In a typical year, people would come in and there'd be a couple hundred people in the, in the office, and we kind of made a big event out of it. But the last two years, we've done it through the U.S. Mail. We, our waiting list is full. I thank the public for their patience, and hopefully next year, we'll be back to that regular dispersal method. We're preparing offices in our building for the addition of the Adult Protective Services Unit, which will be transferring from Job and Family Services under the umbrella of Office for Older Adults in September. We've also partnered with the county maintenance and hiring company to get an overhaul of our courtyard landscaping. It's quite, it looks kind of seussical right now, you know, plants everywhere and overgrown, and it really wasn't touched last year. It wasn't utilized, and it hasn't been touched this year. And it's amazing to see what a couple of years of letting something like that go can do. But we are on it, and that should start in the next couple of weeks. I want to mention quick, our curbside meals continue through the summer. We have an event tomorrow, August 4th and August 25th. We have a parking lot bingo event in August on the 19th in Brunswick. And then our large-scale event is planned in Medina on September 10th from 11:00 to 1:00. It's called the Luau on the Lawn. I like the name. It'll feature Island Jeff playing the steel drums, a picnic lunch, which should include barbecue chicken and farmer's market stands. And then the Senior and Adult Foundation is sponsoring the large tent rental for this event.
And it'll be here on the square?
Nope. It'll be at the, at our big lawn area, right in front of 246.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, we're going to put up a tent and chairs and luau on the lawn. Please join us.
So Laura, what are the requirements for masks or no masks?
Much like, much like Krista was reporting earlier, just the recommendation that anyone who is not vaccinated, wear masks. We have signs to that effect. We still have, we still have a temperature checker. We saw the symptom list, but nobody's required to use it. It's there hopefully to make people feel safer. If they're not feeling well, they can check their temperature and things like that. But there are no mask requirements, and we don't want to be the vaccination police. Although, we do have really cool vaccination card holders if anybody wants one.
Suitable for framing?
Yeah, suitable. But if you want to keep something like that in your purse, it is a nice little container.
Excellent.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Have a good one. Next up, we have Jim Dieter from our Soil and Water District. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. It's been three months since I was here last. So just an update of things we've done. We've certainly kept busy over the last three months with different drainings, pond visits, public outreach, and some just general homeowner visits. And they told probably over 150 different visits between all, between myself and Eric and the other staff. So we've really proud of getting that done and reaching some of those people. Although the last week and a half, it's been quite hectic due to the, some of the weather conditions that have been thrown at us that we have no choice over. We have to just deal with it. We've also started working with Montville Township on their park that they have, and helping them manage their invasive plant control and introducing new native plants into their, their plantings that they hope to have, and try to guide them on getting a, a plan submitted or of what they want to do there on paper so that everyone knows, has a direction. But that's something they have to set up. We'll help guide them if they so choose. We also finished up over the past few months here, our tree sales, our fish sales, our native plant sales that we've had. They were quite successful. Particularly the fish sale, we had over like 85 people come in and get fish and stuff. Our social media, we appreciate the equipment and stuff that we're able to get through, some of the funding. And we're doing two new videos every month to go on our website and Facebook and so on. So we keep them up. We also work with the county and also townships on their newsletters and their websites to keep them, keep our name and our message out for conservation and water quality, out for, for those homeowners. That includes newsletter articles and that for their newsletters. We had a couple of different projects we worked with. Abbey did two different tree plantings, also did a major stream cleanup in Champion Creek. We did some different invasive removal on some of the parkland and some of the other private properties. We set up some things. Concept plans, Eric's worked on some of the three or four concept plans that have come through. We've been involved with going over the resource concerns that may show up in a particular proposed development. As far as upcoming events, we have coming is our, the supervisors did decide on a date for our annual meeting, which will be October 28th. A venue has yet to be chosen or timed, but in that time, we'll also have an election of two of our supervisors. We'll be attending the Medina County Fair in our booth and working with the fair and the hay show and other displays that we will have there. And also, what's going on is a cover crop program available in the Muskingham watershed area, which is basically southern Medina County. area, which is basically southern Medina County. That program is finishing up now as we speak, so that will be completed. Farmers will get paid basically the per acre of cover crop planted following a specific, typically a high erosion-type crop, like a soybean removal or corn silage. Once that taken off and went some cover on there and they're being promoted to do that. We'll also be having a fall plant sale for native plants. And also stop by the office, the prairie is starting to bloom and have different colors and things to look at, and if you give us a heads up, we could stop out and walk through with you and explain what's going on. Any questions?
Jim, with all the rain that we've had, it would seem, referring to Chippewa Lake in particular, that with all the flow through the lake, that that's beneficial to keeping the algae and stuff down, but on the flip side of that, there's a lot more runoff coming in from fields and what have you. So is it, is it a good thing, or is it, how does it affect the lake?
Well, I think in some cases, as you said, there's a benefit because it does flush it out better, but in the other case, it does, because it's flushing out, it also brings up other nutrients that are, the legacy nutrients that are in the bottom of the lake. That's why we're getting a lot of E. coli issues, and that's closed the lake down here and there. There's lots of different theories of why that's there. Is it from runoff? Is it legacy? It's, they're going back and forth on that. I know Abby's working pretty close with the parks, and parks is, they're heavily involved with it also along with the folks in the Chippewa, Glory Glens area. But to answer your question directly, Bill, it's, because it's such a large watershed for the lake, it's a lot of water that comes through there, and it also brings in other things, and whether it's coming from farm fields or from failed septic systems or just natural occurring stuff, it's going to happen, and we have to try to deal with that. We have to try to educate people. We are educating people in the area of, you know, maintaining things for water quality.
Does the cover crop program also contribute, I guess, preserve the water quality? Because it's holding the soil?
That's, that's, that's the purpose of that, but that's basically for the whole Muskingham area. Chippewa is included in that, but basically, that's put for the whole sediment control for the whole watershed in general.
Right, right. But it's beneficial when the farmers get on the program?
Absolutely.
And they can get compensated for planting?
Some, some. But it's just an incentive to do that, and is it a catch-all, cure-all? No, but it certainly does give the cover to that ground that wouldn't normally have any type of cover, and it's just good soil health also. It's certainly something that we encourage and look for people to do.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Have a good day then.
Next, we have Stacy Mallicker from our Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Thank you.
Good morning, Stacy.
Morning, how are you?
Good.
I appreciate the time to come and talk with you today. We have declared July the Direct Support Professional Work Crisis Awareness Month. As you know, the Direct Support Professionals, they are the frontline people that work with people with developmental disabilities and make sure that they're safe, healthy, and have fulfilling lives. We also know that there's a workforce crisis throughout the state of Ohio and the nation. The difference being is that the Direct Support Professionals, the DSPs, they can't take a shift off. They can't tell a group home, you know, "We're going to shut this shift down, and we're not going to provide services." That's the difference, and it's been a crisis. This is nothing new. The pandemic has just really exasperated that and created a shortage. Today, I know I would like to recognize Intervention for Peace. I've got Society here, two providers that we work with among many providers on trying to find short-term solutions as well as long-term solutions, and there's no easy answer, but we're approaching it, collaborating together, trying to find innovative ways to incentivize, to take some burden off of the Direct Support Professionals so that we have a continuum of services out there for, for the individuals. I am going to be sending some stuff out to you, some more information this week. One of the things as leaders in our community, if there's any opportunities you have to bring light to that, to advocate for that, both locally and at the state level, we would appreciate it. But again, we're working together, trying to find solutions, and every little bit helps.
Stacy, if I remember correctly, last year, we passed a resolution recognizing July as DSP month?
I believe that we did, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're...
So if you'd like us to do that again?
Okay.
Probably.
That would be great, and I believe I'm back here next week?
Perfect.
For my update, either next week or the following week. I look at Rhonda because I'm sure she knows the top of your head.
Yeah, I have to look.
Yeah.
I know it's a local paper, The Post, as well as the Gazette, you have large advertising, very prominent.
We're trying to give recognition, one of the things that we have worked with our provider agencies is, you know, the DSP of the month and recognizing, and those are people that are nominated by their peers, they're recognized by their peers for the work that they're doing, and we're also trying to do a quarterly recognition of provider agencies. So again, to shed light on this wonderful career opportunity for people and really appreciate people for the work that they do. You know, one of the unsung heroes, as we know, are the people that provide services for other people, and we're trying to elevate that and bring recognition to it. Any questions for me?
Any other? No?
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
We'll have a resolution next month.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Commissioners have a few resolutions here. I'm going to do the first one separately. This is a resolution commending those selected as a member of the 2021 Spring Leadership Ball in service to Feeding Medina County. Feeding Medina County's mission is to educate, engage, and lead our community in creating an environment where no one goes hungry. Nurture our community with essential programs that put food on the table for children, families, seniors who are at risk of hunger, and be the resource to fight hunger until the need no longer exists. It has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners, and I'll read the names, is our members of the 63rd Annual Spring Leadership Ball in service to Feeding Medina County. They are all in the top third of their class at their respective high schools and have exhibited school and community involvement and leadership experiences. So they are all commended on being a member of the 2021 Spring Leadership Ball in service to Medina County, and those involved are Alyssa I., Alexis Barton, Maria Cipro, Stephanie Conley, Alexandra Dillon, Abigail Ellis, Lana Estock, Kylie Fernlund, Lindsay Frederick, Olivia Gillespie, Julia Grady, Emma Harris, Allison Haydo, Sarah Henigan, Lilia Jackson, Taryn Kenny, Catherine Coons, Molly Leporis, Abby McKee, Lila Nye, Elizabeth Oberhaus, Hannah Petrowski, Dana Raybung, Rachel Robinson, Teresa Sali, Desiree Schaefer, Grace Salva, Ashley Snyder, Jordan Thomas, and Olivia Vukovich.
Well, move to approve, I believe it's 30.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, resolutions.
Second?
Any comment? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. And I have two other resolutions here. The first is appointing a representative to the Medina County Home Advisory Council, and we are appointing Stephanie Manhoff for a term that is effective immediately as the mental health representative with her term expiring August 19th, 2024. And the second is to appoint Colleen Rice as the General Public Rent Representative to the Home Advisory Council with a term beginning August 19th, 2021 and expiring August 19th, 2024.
With thanks, one for the two to serve on the Medina County Home Advisory Council. Move to approve both.
Second?
Got a motion, second? Any comment?
Thank you for your service.
Yes, well, I'd like to thank Jackie Gersbacher, who is retiring from the board, and for all her service. Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. We will move into public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the board this morning? Seeing none, we will move into discussion session. Scott Miller.
I have a couple of things I'd like to discuss with you. We'll start with the camera system, since that was brought up earlier.
This is the camera system at the jail?
At the jail, correct. So we've, as you know, we've got a chiller at the jail. It's the original chiller. It's got about a 25-year lifespan, and we're hitting that 25, 26-year timeframe. We had set money aside specifically for that, about $300,000. Since then, we've also been, recommendations have also been made to replace a boiler, which would be about another $100,000. We're able to use ARP monies for those two improvements. So what I would like to do is I would like to take the ARP monies, I would like to use those for the chiller and the boiler at the jail, take those monies that we set aside for those two items or for the chiller, and use that for the camera system, and then also to address, we have some flooding issues, and we also have an issue with the walking bridge up at the Human Service Center. Water is getting in behind the envelope and causing corrosion. So the sheriff has about $140,000 that he's raised independently, so it'd be about $120,000 of that $300,000 that we set aside, and I would like to use the $120,000 for the camera system and then $180,000 and put it towards the Human Service Center. And then if there are any overages on the parking lots, I know there were some unexpected things that we uncovered when we did the parking of the Human Service Center, we can cover that additional exchange orders with that. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to go ahead and move forward with that and get something on?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and put something on for the ARP monies in the next few weeks to address the chiller and the boiler. I know Stephen's still getting quotes from Gardner on that. The second thing I'd like to talk about is I know last year about this time, we talked about solar energy and a sustainability plan. So we wanted to wait until later this year to look at that because we have an electric contract that comes up in April and then one that comes up in December of next year. So the four areas I'd like to look at are energy, the wastewater, the waste management, and the economic enhancement. I've already talked to sanitary engineer. I need to talk to the Park District and Soil and Water. I want to talk to economic, I've already talked to economic development. And then obviously, we've been in communication with our energy advisors, talk about solar. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to go ahead and start drafting that, put together, meet with these individuals, meet with these organizations or these departments, and set goals, put something together, present it to you, let you look at it, get your input on it, and then develop a plan where we possibly purchase a certain percentage of our electric through, green energy through solar, wind, and obviously set goals for increased recycling, economic improvements, and bringing companies in the county. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to go ahead and start doing that.
So this would be in preparation for going out, I mean, we've got those renewals coming up.
Yes.
So the idea would be is to have these in place, there are goals we're trying to accomplish, and see what would be the best, if you will, vendors to be able to accomplish that. You had the proposal from the CCAO, the Palmer Energy, and then our current community energy advisors. So essentially, we would say, here's what we want, what do you force to meet those goals? Would that be the plan?
Yes, so what we would do is we would basically set the goal, I mean, do we want a 25% green energy, 50% green energy, and then once that's done, we can see what's actually available out there.
Yeah, part of the genesis for this was the courthouse. We looked at, considered putting solar on the roof of the courthouse, but as we investigated it, the cost and the complexity with maintaining it...
And the efficiency in northeast Ohio.
Yeah, it was extraordinary, and it seems to make a lot more sense to take part of our load and to buy solar if we want to be green and not go to the expense and complexity of having our own solar system on top of the courthouse, so.
Correct.
But yeah, I think it's great to plan ahead. I mean, we've got, you know, what, 10 months or so before the first contract comes out, a little over a year for the second, so we can put together a good program, I think. So, thank you, Scott. I appreciate it.
I don't necessarily agree that solar fields aren't possible in northeast Ohio. Wadsworth has theirs, that's what they usually, so you have to, you do have to do a full evaluation.
But they're not as efficient as the South, yeah.
Well, you have to do an evaluation, whether it's cost effectiveness, and obviously, technology has changed, but I agree, obviously, we ought to be looking in that direction.
Yeah, and Wadsworth actually has two solar fields.
Yes, they do.
Rather significant.
Yes, you're right. Yeah, you're right.
Okay. The other thing is I know that there was some talk previously about moving from Noaka to AMATS. I had provided, I got information from the prosecutor's office on what the steps would, it would take to move, and I gave these, or I sent you each a copy of what the prosecutor provided. So the question that I have for you is, do you want me to go ahead and continue kind of moving forward and looking at doing this? I know that the biggest hurdle that we would have is we would have to have 75% of the existing board of Noaka approve our departure.
And also 75% of the receiving board to approve.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. I guess, Scott, one of my questions, and I don't know the answer to it, is, is there a benefit to Medina County to do it? And then we're jumping from one fire into another fire. I'm not sure that at the end of the day, that it's going to be beneficial. And also, my understanding is, is that even if certain parts of Medina County were to move, we couldn't take the entire county with it. So for instance, I think all of the metropolitan areas would still stay in Noaka, and only the rural areas would be able to move to the alternative system. And that's my understanding, Stephen. You correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't think that's accurate.
That's correct. I think you could, obviously, they're part of the urbanized area.
Right.
Comes down to is, I know there's some pending projects that are looking, that are coming up, like Brunswick, I think has one or...
Brunswick and Wadsworth.
In Wadsworth, Wadsworth, yeah, you're right, and that would impact them, but right now, we're only talking, when you talk about AMATS, you're only talking about transportation planning. We've got that other component still, the air quality planning?
That stays.
That would stay in place in Noaka. You have the two-way water quality plan, likewise, we'd have to contract for that, and so we'd then be forced to be subject to them in those areas, but not have a vote on the board. And so there, I think that's a complication of that unless you can actually carve out the...
Right, the whole thing.
Both of those out, and then that, I think, but it's one, there is still, as you point out, and you properly pointed out, there's that hurdle of getting 75%.
Which is probably unattainable.
But you have to have City Cleveland doing it. So our battle is within Noaka itself. As much as it might be beneficial, I think our battle is certainly is working with the other counties. They're changing politics, you've got a new mayor that's going to be elected to the city of Cleveland, hopefully one more cooperative and understanding of outer areas, and of course, the changes in politics as they work out in Lorraine County, where, you know, for the first time in four decades, you have two Republicans.
Two Republicans, right.
And so I think that there's that opportunity, that's who we need to work with right now, the battle, but keeping in mind what the process is of a vote. It's a bit more complicated, not as easy. But I do appreciate all the work and understanding, but we have those other areas we have to consider, and if we lose, and while we have a pending, it was, we... And if we lose, and while we have a pending, it was, we put it, tabled the motion, talking about the facility planning areas of the two-way, identifying with more precision as to those, where we're going to put sewers or not. That was tabled for the last board meeting. And what ultimately means that the commissioners, everyone want to go outside that area, would have to, what required the No Waka board to approve. And if we're no longer a voting member, we've totally lost the ability to impact our own future. So I think those are all things we have to consider. I, there'd be, I think AMATS would be a far more amicable group to work with, there's no doubt, but it's somewhat of a problem to get that.
So I can take this off my to-do list?
I would suggest that you take it off your list.
I will gladly do that.
Thank you, Scott.
Unless the politics gets a whole lot worse, I think, in the decision-making.
We can always bring it up again.
I think they saw in the last few months how unhappy we were, and maybe they will head in some better directions for us.
Right, let's hope.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Jeremy, anything? Jim, you have anything else? Forrest, I think we're talking to you later, right?
Yes.
Okay. Stephen, anything else? Hallie, anything else? Andy?
Did you want to just bring up as far as the-
168?
Yes.
Yeah, and then House Bill 168 would be the-
Is it 168 or 111?
No, it's 168.
168.
Is it 168?
Yeah. It's 168.
And as you guys are aware, the state legislature, in their infinite wisdom, has put me in charge of priority ranking sewer and water projects.
Maybe we should have Jeremy.
So, and that's a county-wide application where they set aside, what is it, $250 million statewide that is going to be competitively ranked? And the language in the bill is that the county engineers assign priority rankings for counties that within, or projects within the county. And it's supposed to follow a specific set of scoring criteria that doesn't exist yet. So my thought-
And we have 60 days to do it.
And we have 60 days from June 29th to do it. So I think it'd be wise for us to get a letter out to all the operators in the county, where maybe Jeremy can get me that list.
Do we have any idea how many there are?
I'm going to say five to 10.
To make them, A, aware in that the money's there, and B, I guess, to know what limited, what the process is as we know it now. I think it's hopefully going to be changing a little bit, and maybe there will be an extension on the time. It seems to be a tight timeframe, seems how there is no criteria yet. So I don't know, maybe Steve knows a little bit more about that.
The Department of Health has to come up with rules which have to approve by J.Car, which is, and so all of that process will take some time. The 60 days, this is one of those amendments that were added to the bill in the very last week or two, they took federal money, $250 million, yeah.
The bill being a state budget.
160, well, yeah, but they ended up putting it on another bill, that's why the confusion of. And it was specifically for this program with the Department of Development. My impression is that I believe that what you had a number of big players that were looking for some way to kind of funnel into a process that they already favorably know and have more influence over than the normal OPWC or any of these others that would also qualify. So this is one of those that probably some big players have already identified, and they haven't identified, so I'm sure there's a lot of internal, I know the state associations, the county engineers association is kind of leading the charge of developing a working group to come up with recommendations for the department. So that has to be worked out, but it, but it's a competitive grant.
It is competitive, yes.
And $250 million, I think, hopefully, our various entities will have some projects. Once you get the criteria, you can start taking a look at, but the idea, I think, is since it's competitive, we'll have to support whatever projects come out of here. But they asked for a ranking.
Yes.
And, but I'll just note, there are a number of counties, are counties that do have their county highway engineers serving as sanitary engineer. So, oh, yes, so it's, it was directed, I think, more for them than it was, but this is one of those was added without thorough vetting.
Discussion, yeah.
Which is what happens when you get towards the budget and towards the end, and everybody's leaving for the summer. So, yeah.
It's five o'clock somewhere.
Exactly, so they put $250 million, they had a lot of money, boom, there you go, and everybody can take, take credit for helping do sewer and water projects, but nobody looking at the final details, nor was it fully vetted through a committee process.
Yeah, but just for your knowledge, we'll get a list of the, the operators in the county, send them a pretty short and generic letter saying, here's the program. If you have a project, you're going to have to get it scoped and get some details and get it ready for some middle, so we can, you know, once the criteria comes up, we can get them scored and get them back down to the state.
So this would apply to the county, too, whether the county has projects. So we really have, what, three villages that have their own system, and then three cities that have their own system? And Medina-
Well, City of Cleveland is the one in Brunswick, yeah.
Well, their water, but-
Their water, their water, but I was talking about waters qualify.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if rural, water qualify.
They have some, right? They have some in-
So they're, like I said, I need some help coming up with the comprehensive list.
Yeah, okay.
Seems how this isn't my area.
So then, Andy, are you, are you thinking that, and I think there was a suggestion that maybe there's like a group meeting for representatives to come together and-
Well, at this point, it may be a little premature to have a meeting because, other than me telling them, here, this is what the bill is, and get your projects together, there's nothing for me to really explain because the criteria isn't out there. You know, once maybe we have what the scoring criteria is, maybe if that comes in, hopefully before the 60 days, that would be a time to get everybody together and say, and this is how maybe you can tailor your, your application a little better.
One of the promoters of the legislative promoters is Representative Kevin O'Briens from Trumbull County. He's the one that I think originally sent the video out. He brought his county already people together, so he could get a lot of good press coverage that he provided money. So that's, that's what happens. I mean, so, and they're going to come up with a plan, obviously, but he has had a heads-up because he was promoting it. Former commissioner, so we can't say anything bad about him, but we can certainly say that he's, he's making sure his county is taken care of, which is fine, as a legislator.
And we'll try to do the same.
Exactly right.
All right.
That's all I have.
Good deal. Thanks, Andy.
Sure.
I think that, well, actually, do you have anything for discussion? Do you have any?
No.
Ronda? Okay, I don't, I don't either. So we have a need to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation. Steve, can you have a-
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. So we will come out of executive session later and adjourn the meeting officially. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.